I’m calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I am presiding over this meeting as Mayor Pro-Tim, and I’m Council President Kritzer. I will call roles, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Sorry, here, 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 here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Nuevo Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson has not joined us, and I will announce her if she arrives. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. We have no special orders of the day today. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you’ll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. As a reminder, councilmembers will generally not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW42.17A.555 prohibits any public comment during a council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business, as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are eighteen people signed up to speak tonight in person and two online. And before we continue on, I will note that Councilmember Anderson has joined us, and that we are also joined online by Mayor Bernie. And with that, we will start with the first couple names on the list. I’ll read them, so you know who’s coming next. Please come up to the podium when it is your time. The first is Mary Comstock, then Erin Hallaby, then Valentina Veniva. Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Bernie. Hello, council in the building and online. My name is Mary Comstock, and I’m the regional manager representing the Redmond Library tonight, to give our annual report to you, to council. With me tonight is four, no, one, two, three members of our Redmond Library Board of Trustees. We have Joanna Kim, who’s our board president, Naveen Jamin, and Erin Hallaby, who is over there. As you know, the Board of Trustees is advisory capacity to the Redmond City Council, and coordinates and gives input to the King County Library system, and I’m thrilled to have them with us tonight. With you, in your packet, is some of the statistics from the Redmond Library. This year through October, we have had three hundred, over 300,000 visits to the library. We have almost 35,000 active cardholders, and we have created almost 5,000 new patron accounts, and we have checked out, digitally and physically, almost 1,500,000 items. This is a very busy place across the parking lot. I also want to share with you that we have several programs in partnership with the city of Redmond. That includes our weekly Redmond Community Court and Resource Center, our nonprofit and fundraising research databases, with which we do one-on-one assistance, and have done programs in the past with human services. I see Brooke Buckingham is online tonight. Storytimes with the Parks and Rec at the Farrow McWherter Park and on the Great Lawn. We do storytimes also at the New Redmond Senior and Community Center. We’re doing talktime twice a week, which is English learning, and our welcoming ambassadors assist our immigrant and refugee communities in the library. So I invite you to read more about this with the handout that you have. Tonight, I want to especially thank some members of the city’s staff, who work so closely with us, including Zach Hovener, Erica Chua, Laura Williams, and Mac Leonard, with the Parks and Rec Department and the event staff. Dominique Meeks, from Planning and Development, is working with us on an Entrepreneur Roadmap series. We are also very grateful to Sergeant Patty Nar, who’s the community engagement sergeant, who works so closely with us to keep the community safe and welcoming. In addition, we’ve been working with Kristin Raftis on World Cup soccer, and we’re very, very excited about that. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for your partnership, and how we are engaging community together. We do have an additional three minutes, which I’m going to give to one, because one of our other people signed up, from your Board of Trustees advising the library. So I’ll pass that to Erin. Actually, Naveen’s going to speak for him.
Thank you, Mary. Respected members of the city council and Mayor Bernie, my name is Naveen Ajwan. I am part of the Library Board of Trustees. As part of the board, I have the privilege to work with Mary Comstock and her team of librarians. I would like to take this opportunity to, first off, thank the city council and the mayor for your steadfast support of the Redmond Library. I can speak from personal experience. Our community truly appreciates the work that library does. Cheers during the Redmond Derby Days parade, as the library contingent walks by, is just an indication of that. Mayor Bernie, thank you for promoting the work of the library earlier this summer. In your interview with Mary on the city YouTube channel, it demonstrates to our community and the surrounding communities the importance our leadership places on an institution of learning. You all probably know library supports many programs that go far beyond learning for all sections of our community. Lastly, I learned something in our last board meeting that I wanted to share here. I was very pleased to learn about the collaboration between our librarians and the various city departments. The librarians meet regularly with various city departments, supporting them on initiatives. One such example is what Mary just mentioned. It is around the Soccer World Cup preparations. Our librarians are working with the city to organize several soccer-centric programs at and through the library. This is a great example of two institutions working together to make our community amazing. Thank you all for creating such an environment. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And just a note in the future, please make sure to have the speaker sign up as the speaker who has signed up. So, appreciate that. Next on our list is Valentina Veniva, then Jaclyn Kimsey, then Allison Morton. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Valentina, and while I’m not a resident of Redmond anymore, I still have close connections to the city. I want to express my strong support for the council’s decision to disable Flock cameras, and I hope they are actually disabled, but I’m also asking you to cancel your arrangement with Flock completely and remove the cameras. Flock has not been known for upholding privacy and security standards, and recently there were several additional news and media reports about how easy it is to access its data without any kind of authorization or a public records request. Weighing that against the fact that the company’s claims that it helps prevent crime have not been corroborated by independent research, I think that actual risks far outweigh presumed benefits. And given the amount of data collected and the current political climate, I personally would be very uncomfortable if the cameras stayed in place, even if they are now turned off. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jaclyn Kimsey, then Allison Morton, then Bill King. Go ahead.
All right. Hello, my name is Jaclyn Kimsey, and I’m here to ask you to remove those Flock cameras, the mass surveillance system that is currently set up here in Redmond. Researchers at the University of Washington released a report in October that showed federal immigration agencies like ICE and Border Patrol had accessed the data of at least eighteen Washington cities, often without the police department’s knowledge. It is not known if that information was used to target or arrest immigrants. However, we saw three people be targeted and arrested right here in Redmond, and I was horrified that ICE was able to get that data and do that. I think it’s not enough to just turn off the cameras. We need to remove them completely. Flock has already proven that they are not reliable company, because they’ve already shared that information that we don’t want to share with other agencies such as ICE. And in fact, right here, Judge Elizabeth Yost Netter Zowitski, if I’m saying that right, of Skagit County Superior Court, ruled images captured by Flock brand cameras qualified as public records, subject to the state’s Public Records Act, siding with a tattoo artist who had sought access to the data from multiple police agencies. And we already have an example right here of how the Flock cameras can be used by normal citizens, which means they could be used by any citizen who would want to do somebody’s, do something bad to somebody. And that’s why I’m asking, please remove all the Flock cameras in Redmond, and please make sure that we don’t have a mass surveillance system in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Allison Morton, then Bill King, then Faith 2386.
Good evening. My name is Allison Morton. I’m the Chief Advancement Officer at Kindering. Kindering serves thousands of children on the east side every year, including 400 residents in the city of Redmond. And I want to also thank everyone in the city of Redmond for our incredible new campus at the Together Center, so we are very happy to be members of this community. And tonight, I want to share gratitude, on behalf of Kindering, for your partnership on two critical programs: Families in Transition, or FIT, and Parent Education. As you make challenging budget decisions, I want to share how these programs advance the city’s goals around family stability, equity, and access to essential services. FIT serves families experiencing housing insecurity through community-based developmental evaluations and therapies for children, as well as relational health support and essential navigation assistance that support the whole family. Why is this particular program so important to our population? A staggering 75% of children experiencing homelessness also experience at least one developmental delay by their fifth birthday. We’re proud to share that FIT works. Eighty-three percent of children in FIT made measurable developmental progress last year. This is remarkable, given all the stressors that FIT families experience in addition to housing concerns, such as fears around immigration, challenging accessing of food, clothing, diapers, and so much more. FIT’s outcomes prove that this wraparound model, which takes all of these needs into account, works wonders for our kids’ development. Kindering’s Parent Education Program also plays a key role in supporting Redmond families. Kindering provides parent coaching, workshops, and resource materials in a family’s home language to help caregivers respond to challenging behaviors and support healthy child development. This work directly supports Redmond’s goals around mental health, early intervention, and equitable access to services. Together FIT and our Parent Education Program help stabilize families, strengthen the parent-child relationship, and support children’s readiness for school and lifelong learning. They also reduce downstream costs by addressing challenges early, before they can escalate into crises that demand far more intensive public resources. Redmond’s investment in these services has a measurable, lasting impact on our children and families. Thank you for your partnership and for your commitment to ensuring that Redmond’s youngest residents have the support they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Bill King, then Faith 2386, and then Wolf Adriatico. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bill King. I live downtown. I’d like to thank the council for its quick action in suspending the Flock camera program. We’re all living through a moment in history where it behooves us to pay special consideration to how our infrastructure might be used or abused to invade privacy or to do harm to ourselves and our neighbors. Many of the concerns we all have with the Flock cameras are not exclusive to Flock. They are inherent in this kind of system. I hope that this council will continue acting with expediency to cover and remove all of the Flock cameras from our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Faith 2386, then Wolf Adriatico, then Caleb Lee.
While I don’t have much to say about Flock, I will say that I do not trust “turned off” for basically any device that is harmful in any way. That they should be unplugged, but, you know. Let me re, sorry if I start talking like a 2016 era tech reviewer, it’s my native accent. In the study session last week, there was a lot of talk of preserving the legacy and history of the old firehouse. And really, I think that’s just ironic, given that the current plan is to completely replace it with something else. I, in some ways, appreciate the attempt to try to preserve, like, what it was and its culture, but the problem is, how are you really going to do that when you’re taking the original thing down with, and like, taking some, like, things that were not permanent to the building and bringing them into a new space, sure, but it’s like, I don’t know. It’s, excuse me, give me just a moment. The amount of goodwill that this council has lost with the teens who actually use teen services over the past few years has been staggering and honestly impressive, in a way. I, the, I hadn’t seen a space like the old firehouse before in anything around this entire county, this state, and I was really, really impressed by it for the couple times that I went there. And the fact that it’s just got immediately taken out from under the rug of people is, and the worry is about the future. But the thing that is most poignant to me is, right now, what’s happening to the people who were attending the firehouse and the people who feel like they don’t have a place to go. For people who feel like they are just completely alone and drifting without a support structure anymore, because that, the firehouse was their only support structure. That’s all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wolf Adriatico, then Caleb Lee, then Ellie Firdell. Go ahead.
Hello, I’m a stakeholder of the OFH Stakeholder Group, and I’d like to say that the OFH Stakeholder Process has been deliberately mishandled from the start. Out of its 23 members, only four were unassociated with the city’s executive functions and are the only members excluded from the initial proposed roster by the Tyrants Office. Besides these four, there were only four other teens from RIAIPAC and the Redmond Library Teen Advisory Board. There are two participants listed as community members, David Klein and Rob Levitt, both of whom served the city on the Salary Commission and Civil Services Committee, respectively. This misrepresentation of their backgrounds allowed the city to claim a diversity of voices that did not exist. Only four of these 23 members are from the community. To discount their opinions, city staff and stakeholders, who were also city staff, blatantly told them they should not have a say. They aren’t taxpayers, they’re naive and inexperienced, and don’t know what’s best for them. The city also discredited their analysis by labeling them all “save OFH members,” despite excluding that group’s leaders and its vocal advocates. The city manipulated them and the public into believing the teens had any say in this process, a complete falsehood. Since I have a bit of time, I’d like to say that I am so privileged to be supported by a community spanning children, teens, adults, and seniors, who respect me and treat me as an equal, to be measured not by my age, but by my deeds. They are a found family I’ve come to rely upon time and again. We’ve spoken a great deal of what the old firehouse was and what it means to the community, but what of its closure? I see it as many things: a source of ongoing turmoil, a source of distress in local government, but also a symptom of a greater problem. Redmond’s vision of privately-owned public spaces is inherently flawed. Whereas government supposed lease exists to serve the people, businesses’ sole focus is profit. Your elected officials outsource their duty, and, outsource their duty of care to corporations and, in so doing, commodify the people. The city prioritizes money above all else and is willing to sacrifice anything else. In conclusion, I remind the council that the stakeholder recommendation, which your decision is based on, is tainted and does not reflect the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Caleb Lee, then Ellie Firdell, then Eugenio Vidalas.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Lee. Use he/him pronouns. I’d like to comment on the city Redmond’s use on automated license plate recognition cameras, specifically the ones made by Flock. I believe that Flock’s model of constant surveillance shows an inherent distrust in the citizenry of the city of Redmond. They are an invasion of privacy that many people are uncomfortable with. Additionally, these cameras have been proven to be vulnerable to cyber attacks. A research paper by John Gaines identified numerous weak points which Flock, the company, has failed to address. The data Flock collects has been used to help federal agents conduct raids on vulnerable immigrant and refugee populations throughout the country. While we do not have conclusive evidence that ICE has used Redmond’s Flock data, we still have a responsibility to protect everyone in our community. I implore the city of Redmond to cancel their contract with Flock and take down these cameras as soon as feasibly possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Ellie Firdell, then Eugenio Vidalas, then Bob Yoder. Go ahead.
I have a whole thing written down, but it feels kind of stupid to say all of it, so I’ll just say the parts that are kind of more important. My name is Ellie. I am 15 years old, and I’m a sophomore at Redmond High School, which is an easy 10-minute drive from the old firehouse, which I feel means that I, a child, should not be yelling at you guys about a teen center. For me, I mainly went to the teen center for the live music, and one of my favorite local bands always says, “Life is rigged,” because their band name is Rigged. And I’ve now started to believe that, because I feel not heard by all of you guys. So, yeah, you really proved it way beyond what I thought was possible, so, yeah.
Thank you. Next up is Eugenio Vidalas, then Bob Yoder, then TJ Horner. Go ahead.
Hello, council. My name is Eugenio Vidalas. I’m here to ask the council to end the contract with the Flock cameras. I think it’s a for-profit company that has a proven track record of pushing out early hardware that’s not cyber, cybersecurity-tested, and because of that, it’s led to consistent failures of, what do you call it, facial recognition and doing false flags on innocent people. As an electrical engineer and a fan of tech and cybersecurity, I also think these cameras are not secure, and any sort of software disable is still vulnerable to any sort, like, hardware hack. So I please ask you to end the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Yoder, followed by TJ Horner, followed by David Morton.
Hi, Bob Yoder. Esteemed councilmembers and mayor, I was reading the agenda for tonight, and I was very happy and amazed that it says, according, I’ll quote it, it says, “After an extensive community engagement process, study of the financial and other implications of different options, and reviewing the stakeholder group recommendation and focus group results, the council,” thank you, “passes the following motion to provide formal direction on the old firehouse teen center,” and I hope you’ll act on that tonight. The action is to rebuild the teen center on the same location, prioritize expedience in construction, and center the teen voices in the design process, and including music performance space and dedicated recording studio to continue the old firehouse teen center. So, I know, and consented agenda, you can go through and not talk about it, but I hope you do talk about it, because a lot of effort, as you know, is put into it, and the teens, I’m sure, are interested too. So, and I want to thank you for all the work that you’ve put into this. It’s been arduous, and you’ve gone out of your way to help, and the mayor’s chipped in too. So, thank you. I don’t know how much time I have, but I wanted to talk about the salary. In the same agenda, the executive pay was, plan came up, it mentioned the different salaries, but it did not mention the bonuses, which have been significant, and I’ll do a public records request to find them. The reason I think salaries are important, and you’re going to get a report tonight, is that the, they’re never really fully deliberated by council, or shed life on staff salaries. It’s important, because about 80% of our budget is salary and expenses, something like that. So, it’s very important, and I hope that you’ll have more discussion on that. I think our legal costs are up to $1 million right now, with deputy attorney, another attorney, there’s three or four attorneys, and now, if paralegal, so, anyway, that’s it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is TJ Horner, then David Morton, then Erin Hamilton. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Bernie. About a month ago, I spoke at the same podium about my concerns regarding Flock’s automated license plate reader cameras, and why they are significantly harmful to our community. Since then, council has unanimously decided to suspend Flock cameras until further discussion occurs. I would like to thank you for quickly coming to this decision and express my appreciation. In my previous public comment, I mentioned how, despite RPD’s intentions, since Flock owns the data and platform on their own infrastructure, it’s impossible to determine if Flock’s access controls are secure and sound without an audit from independent security research. Well, I have an update for you. Just a few weeks ago, a researcher named John Gaines published a paper, mentioned earlier, where he investigated some of Flock’s cameras, hardware, and platform software to test their vulnerabilities and determine if Flock’s claims regarding privacy and security really align with reality. Spoiler alert: they do not. The paper lists a total of 51 findings, the most notable of which includes, one, the ability to gain full control of the camera using a button easily accessible from the outside of the device; two, the fact that all images are retained on the device indefinitely, despite Flock’s claim that they are deleted if no license plate is identified; and three, that Flock’s web platform does not meet industry-standard authentication requirements, potentially allowing unauthorized actors to obtain camera images and search data without the relevant PD’s knowledge. I have a background in software and cybersecurity, and the discoveries made by Gaines are quite startling. At worst, Flock is intentionally deceiving its customers about the security and privacy of their products and platform, and at best, they are grossly negligent and should not be trusted with any sort of surveillance technology. The fundamental problem with RPD’s data governance policy is that it’s only effective if its vendors can be trusted to respect RPD’s wishes. When Police Chief Lowe unchecks the box on Flock’s web portal to revoke access from an officer or power down a camera, it’s nothing more than a polite request for Flock to do so, since they, again, own the data, platform, and hardware, not RPD. They can choose to ignore it without RPD’s knowledge. Because of this, any potential safeguards implemented by RPD, such as those discussed earlier tonight, are moot. It is clear to me that with these findings, this trust has been violated, and the only acceptable remediation is complete cancellation of Redmond’s contract with Flock and the expedient physical removal of all Flock hardware, not simply a software power-off switch. Additionally, I would strongly recommend a policy to require security audits of this sort from any potential software or hardware vendor before entering an agreement with the city going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is David Morton, then Erin Hamilton, then Daniel Dawson.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I’m David Morton. I’d like to talk about the old firehouse teen center. I want to acknowledge the extensive community engagement process that informed tonight’s recommendation. Over 300 community members participated in stakeholder meetings, focus groups, and surveys. The commitment to centering teen voices throughout this process is commendable and should continue through implementation. The recommendation to rebuild on the same location reflects careful consideration of multiple factors. The stakeholder group used multi-objective decision analysis to evaluate 13 factors, including accessibility, community sentiment, sustainability, and equity. The existing location scored highest because it’s centrally located, transit accessible, and deeply connected to the old firehouse’s 30-year legacy as a teen- and deeply connected to the Old Firehouse's 30-year legacy as a teen space. I support expediting construction. The current facility's deteriorating roof, structural deficiencies, and hazardous materials require urgent action. Teens have already experienced significant disruption since the March 2025 closure. The estimated three-year timeline for a rebuild is longer than for renovation, but rebuilding provides a 50-plus-year lifespan versus 15 to 25 years, making it the better long-term investment. The commitment to include music performance space and a dedicated recording studio honors what made the Old Firehouse special. This focus group emphasized the building's music heritage and its role in launching musical careers. These are core to the teen center's identity and its appeal to the young people who need it most. The guiding values outlined in the stakeholder recommendation should remain non-negotiable: maintaining teen dedicated hours, creating welcoming space for LGBTQ+ and alternative teens, preserving the informal "choose your own activity" atmosphere, and ensuring accessibility through universal design principles, not just ADA minimum compliance. The stakeholder group's minority recommendation to renovate deserves acknowledgement. Four members prioritized preserving the original building's character and reopening sooner. Their perspective reflects genuine concern about maintaining authenticity. Moving forward, please honor the promise that teen voices will remain central through design and implementation. The next phase of engagement must ensure that today's and tomorrow's teens shape a space that truly serves them. Thank you for taking seriously your responsibility to Redmond's young people and for this significant investment in their future.
Thank you. Next up is Aaron Hamilton, then Daniel Dawson, then Charlotte Moore. Go ahead.
Thursday is Transgender Day of Remembrance, a day to honor the memories of the transgender people who we've lost due to anti-trans harassment, bigotry, and violence. A few years ago, I had the pleasure to meet a female trans athlete at a conference I participated in. She was driven, motivated, and eager to make sure trans women's rights to compete in sports. She approached me after a panel I was on about trans women in sports, and we clicked instantly. We stayed in contact and talked about how better to advocate target races we believe would be the most impactful. We were there for each other when the anti-trans legislation started to hit, our ban from the sports we competed in, and the constant attacks we both had to endure. She lived in an anti-trans state, and I was getting worried for her safety. I repeatedly invited her to live with me to get her to safety. She always turned me down because she felt it was more important than ever to represent our community and to fight. It wasn't until recently that someone reached out to me to inform me that she had taken her own life. I was told that on the top of not being allowed to compete in the sport she depended on, but the nonstop hate, harassment, threats, and violence became too much for her. I was given permission to share a part of her letter that I felt was important. She wrote, "Why do I want to live in a world where I'm hated and attacked for just being me and the people and the people who are supposed to protect me don't?" We shared the same goal with our advocacy. We raced to not only raise awareness for the hopes that one trans person would be in that crowd to see someone like them competing at a semi-pro or pro level and inspire them to enter sport. We lost a true hero to our community. I constantly ask that same question. Why would I want to live in this world? I too have almost lost to these thoughts as well. The fight is hard for me just as much as because I've already experienced death, and it was the only time I felt peace. The Redmond Police Department has proven in all of my cases that they don't take anti-trans hate and harassment and attacks or threats seriously. Our own police chief and some officers represented the department and city in a community engagement event with a known anti-trans faith organization, and we don't even get the bare minimum of an apology. This is how we're treated by this city. I will continue to stand here to fight for our lives, that our lives do matter. My friend's life fucking matters. Nothing will improve if no one talks, and yet here I am, month after month, asking for that meeting to see how we can improve this relationship. But it's clear that if you want something done, you have to do it yourself. So I'm hosting an event at the Redmond Community and Senior Center for an open discussion in late January. Once the date is confirmed, invites will be sent to the Redmond Police, the council, the mayor, and the trans community on how we can improve this relationship. So Chief, if you believe in your own words of community policing starts with relational policing, showing up not just when you're called for service, but there's...
Thank you for your testimony, Aaron. And I'm so sorry for your loss. Your time is up. Next up on our agenda is, or next up to speak is Daniel Dawson, then Charlotte Moore, then Hank Myers.
Good evening, council members. My name is Daniel Dawson, and my opinions expressed herein are wholly my own and do not reflect that of my employer or of any affiliates that I have. First, I'd like to say that I'm happy that the city council and chief of police are receptive to public concerns over the Flock Security Company. In September, the CEO of Flock Security, Garrett Langley, in a Forbes interview, said in reference to D-Flock, a public awareness group, quote, "There's terroristic organizations like D-Flock whose primary motivation is chaos. They are closer to Antifa than they are anything else," end quote. It's unfortunate that many cities have not adequately vetted the vendor chosen for this task. However, the problem that I have is not just with Flock Security. There is a significant discussion surrounding the timeline. There has been significant discussion surrounding the timeline that the data is retained, which is an admirable discussion, but it misses the critical issue with systems like this. The critical issue is whether or not you can verifiably prove that the data being collected is not being copied somewhere. It used to be you'd have closed-circuit cameras in a building, and all of those cameras would have wires that would go back to a central hub, which would record the video footage onto VHS tapes, and you controlled everything. You installed it, you could verify that no one was hooking into the wires, and that you controlled everything. But with these Flock systems, with these third-party vendors, you don't control everything. You are given a little window to simulate control, to indirectly control these systems. Flock is just one example of many different vendors that give you a limited amount of access into a system, but they're the ones with the real keys, and they're the ones who get to say what really happens. They, as one of the prior speakers indicated, if you click a button in their portal, you have limited control. You might have an onsite server, but how do you know that the data that was generated at the camera wasn't copied somewhere along the way as it went over the cellular networks or over the Wi-Fi networks, over the internet, to Flock systems, to your server onsite? How do you know that the data wasn't copied and kept somewhere? It's very common in software for copies to be made of things, as logging, backups, et cetera, and it's a very hard process to determine that a copy hasn't been made somewhere along the way. And I don't know the complete extent of what auditing has happened, but I would love to see more details on the audit that occurred and how it verifies chain of custody of this data from the cameras all the way to its destination to prove that we can confidently say that the data has not been copied, has not been duplicated.
And in conclusion? Thank you. Next up on the list is Charlotte Moore, then Hank Myers. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Charlotte Moore, and I'm here today with a concern around the rebuild of the Old Redmond Firehouse. I'm aware that the recommendation has been made to rebuild the center and that there has been some discussion of making the rebuilt space a more generalized, multipurpose space. And as someone who used many Old Firehouse services and found community there in my teens, I am strongly urging that the council ensures teens' needs and experiences are the top priority for this space. We all have seen these studies on isolation and loneliness increasing amongst teens, and what makes the Firehouse so special is that it's a space specifically for that group. And I believe it's important for the Firehouse, whether rebuilt or renovated, to maintain that commitment to be specifically for that audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Hank Myers. Go ahead.
I'm Hank Myers, 17409 Northeast 22nd Street in Redmond, and a council member for three and a half terms under two mayors. Have you heard, you have heard from others what they think about the Flock cameras, and to the extent they quote the Gaines Study or the University of Washington Study, it's inept. These studies, neither of these studies included the city of Redmond, your only jurisdiction. And as we have known, that there has been no leakage despite all the theoretical feelings about them. There have been no leaks, and nothing has ever happened that's untoward. I'm going to address now my opinion of what I think, opinion is what I think is inaccurate and sensationalist reporting of Sharon Yu at King 5 News. We have been given, you've been given copies of her article, and even the first line of the headline is wrong. "The Flock Camera Got It Right: Its Purpose Is To Identify Vehicles Associated With 'At-Large' Felons." You might know this, but my first professional career was as a newspaper and TV reporter. I took journalism courses in college and edited newspapers and yearbooks. From day one, my editors drilled into me being accurate and unbiased. I had to rewrite a few stories that my editors thought were vague but never inaccurate. I think the King 5 story is both reckless and biased in its entirety. It is no coincidence that a few days after you voted to suspend the use of the license plate cameras, that Thor Anderson, Sr., contacted King 5 News. Specifically, they used a quote from Councilmember Stewart, who said the vendor was untrustworthy. Remember Stewart, I don't know if you were asleep during the briefing from the AWC or your county, or your city attorney, but I was told at least six times to avoid making biased and inaccurate personal statements from the dais. Maybe Flock will sue you. I think that would be great because of the, I don't think that bias and reckless behavior should be tolerated or supported, but punished. This council should also authorize your city attorney to seek redress from King 5 for what I believe is defamation. You can clearly see in the video provided by the Redmond Police to King 5 that Thor Anderson, Sr., was uncooperative and did not provide information on the location of his son, who is still at large. So if anybody sees this, knows Thor Anderson, Sr., talk to him. Encourage him to work with the police and to get the wanted felon off the street. And I have to say, Councilmember Stewart, even if Flock does sue you, I hope you refrain from reckless and biased...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
That concludes all the in-person, all of the in-person comments tonight. We have two people signed up to speak remotely, and written comment has also been distributed to the council. Let's call in the two people signed in to speak remotely. Hi, Max.
Hello?
Hi. You have, you have three minutes to address the council. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, good evening. To the council, I sympathize with your position. The Firehouse is a very special thing, and emotions are not known to play well in council. But you have the power and the responsibility to preserve this community. I hope that you've been not only listening, but acting on the things that we've been telling you at public comment over the past few months. To Fields, specifically, I sincerely thank you for your advocacy and support. I really do wish you the best. To the mayor and parks director, I am disappointed by your lack of sympathy, openness to cooperation, or care as to the lives you are impacting. I've noted the lack of substantive conversation since the first time you approached me at that first meeting. I still welcome dialogue going forward in order to protect the integrity of this program as it faces this transition. To the community, no matter what barriers are placed in front of us, we must remember our strengths. We are resilient and resourceful. We know how to do it ourselves. We understand the need to belong. We are creative, and we are capable of incredible and unbelievable things. Do not let this experience make you jaded. Instead, use it to push yourself. Become the person you would have wanted to meet at the Firehouse. Pursue what makes you happy. Explore your identity. Try new and intimidating things. And then, use what you know to help the next person. You never know what someone is going through. So support everyone and encourage them to express themselves. Do your thing. Finally, concerned by the opaque and suspicious structure of the community focus group, which was separated from the hand-selected stakeholders, having considered the great heartbreak this community has endured, and noting with deep appreciation the persistence and dedication of those involved in the effort to save the OFH and preserve its historical integrity, I call on the city to work to ensure the future of the property is something that we as the community can remain active in, and to create a framework that both allows and thrives off of the community involvement in the continuation of this life-saving program. I request any information on the timetable of community engagement for this facility. I reiterate my request for dialogue and ask that any recommendation passed include the ability for the community to voice design concerns and be involved in what the programming space entails. The OFH is a priceless asset that improves the quality of the community that we reside in and transforms, as well as saves, lives. It has thrived off of the energy and passion of the youth and must continue to in these challenging years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Noah. You have three minutes to address the council. Go ahead.
Thank you. First things first, thank you very much for taking the first step. I repeat, one step among more that must be taken in standing up to Flock, a private company whose main onus is on profit as opposed to actual community safety. Moving on to the OFH, I wanted to thank Steve Fields and, to some degree, primarily Fields and to some degree Geraldine Anderson for advocacy, as was mentioned by the person before me. The parks director and the mayor, we all know, have done kind of everything possible to obfuscate, have done everything possible to make it as negative and as difficult as possible. And for congressperson, or pardon me, councilperson, Sol Houdin, who is a congressperson as well, congratulations on retaining your position. I think many of us are happy that we have younger people in politics, and as the youngest legislature in our state's government, you have opportunity to bring that perspective. So I hope that this summer has been educational for you, as it has been for all of us. You can understand that there is an uphill battle coming from minority communities, regardless of your class, and as you take on more state affairs, you're going to come up with more and more situations that are going to require you to weigh human interests, even in a minority percentage, against data-driven decisions. I think we've all seen in the last few years that purely data-driven policy is ruinous to communities both large and small, and it's why we have to fight against things like data centers and mass surveillance systems. And to the rest of the council, as we take a look at what the plan for the Firehouse is, I applaud anything to keep it in that location. I understand that to... I understand that to teens, something created by the council is never going to be cool. But if it does have an all-ages venue focusing on the teens' needs, recording space focusing on art and creativity, I know that it can turn into something like the firehouse became if it is stewarded properly. As I've mentioned before, the problems that we're having with the firehouse now are rooted in decades of a lack of oversight and a lack of diversification in teen services. But it falls on you because you're the ones dealing with the head of it now. And it's an unenviable position, but you have to deal with that. And so for those of you who have been listening, we appreciate. For those of you who haven't, we don't. And I think we can move forward with everybody getting the day they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled?
Twenty-one, please. That was me.
Item twenty-one. Are there any other items to be pulled? I'm just going to check online, make sure no one's got their hand up here. Councilmember Fields?
Yes, I think it was just pulled twenty-one. I just want to confirm, I don't have my email in front of me. That's the teen center, correct?
That's the teen center item, yes.
Yep. Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will pull that item and I'm going to lower Councilmember Fields' hand so that way I can see it if it goes back up again. All right, so there's been one item pulled. I will, there's been one item pulled and we will proceed with the rest of the items with a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
Great, go ahead. Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Noevo Kamina?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye on the, on these items from the consent agenda. The item that has been pulled is item number twenty-one, which is AM number twenty-five dash one-eight-four. Approval to rebuild the teen center on the same location. Prioritize expedience in construction, centering teen voices in the design process, and including music performance space and a dedicated recording studio to continue the Old Firehouse Teen Center legacy. Is there a motion for this item? To approve this item?
So moved.
So moved?
It has been moved by Councilmember Anderson. Council Vice President Forsyth, would you like to second? Great, it has been.
Please, thank you. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Anderson, since you moved it, would you like to speak to this item?
Sure, I would like to amend the main motion to approve the renovation of the teen center on the same location.
There has been a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second. Fields?
It has been moved and seconded to amend. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the teen center. We have been listening and perhaps I haven't engaged in as much conversation as my council members, but I can definitely say, my experiences with this process has been the same. I believe that I can really empathize with the teens and not feeling listened to or been cut out of the process. And given that their ask has been to reopen or to consider the small cost improvements that are potentially available to us in the nearer term so that they can graduate with the same group of folks going through high school the next year, that was essentially what I wanted to be able to say. I've been listening, I'm hearing you, and I'd like to speak for you. And by doing so, I'm proposing this amendment this evening.
Would anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So when we talked about this last week, I was in support of the rebuild and primarily because it maintained the integrity of the location, the integrity of the characteristics, and many of the things that we have grown to appreciate based on the community conversation we've had for almost a year. What, what is, this has been, in my eight years on council, maybe the most disappointing topic of, of the entire eight years. And I've had some disappointments. This started off with misinformation, misinformation to the council. And we, we heard because of that misinformation from our mayor and from our Parks Director about what the likely reaction was from the teens who used the teen center, we immediately heard that, that that was not correct. And it's been a process that has, and I'm not going to go through the same descriptions because Max, who called in, probably described my thoughts and my feelings better than anybody. But what, but I take all of that, all of that difficulty and all of that heartbreak and all of the distrust and, and I'm not picking on council here, but you know, the week after week staring back at these people who are pleading with us to do something and, and how that must look to the community. I take all of that and I break it down to two important things. And one is the conclusion that the, that the fifty years versus twenty-five years, that, that was more of a thought or an opinion. There wasn't a deep study or a deep evaluation done on that. And many of the stakeholders made their recommendation, along with the fact that we had eleven million versus nine million, also very preliminary information. So if you're just looking at that, of course, you're going to come to the conclusion to say, why wouldn't you get an additional twenty-five million, or I'm sorry, twenty-five years of use for measly more, two million dollars more? But I don't buy any of those conclusions, those preliminary. They weren't really done in, in evaluation of what the benefits of renovation would be. And there's not really been a good, objective comparative analysis between renovate and rebuild. So my motion would be, if this one fails, I will make the second motion, would be to change the words to renovate or rebuild based on the mayor's evaluate, based on the executive office evaluation of the options. And then, everything else would stay the same. My expectation is that this motion will fail and I will vote for it because I think that renovation is the right idea. But as a second option, I will also be raising my hand to make another motion, renovate or rebuild. I hope that the council understands that this is a really important step and we shouldn't shortchange it. Now, last thing I want to say about it, is I did have this discussion with my two subcommittee colleagues. They merely sort of rejected that idea that they don't want to go down this path, they don't want to take the time to look at the possibility of what a renovation would mean. I think I get that feeling, I get that understanding because we spent so much time anyway. But once this is built, or once this is torn down, it's permanent. And, and we don't have the option that we have today. So I would say it's important to take this time. And I will wait until this motion fails and then we'll start all.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to the amendment? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I will not be voting in support of this amendment, simply based on the fact that we are looking at a seventy-five-year-old building. And we know from past projects such as the pool, that we don't know what we're really getting into once we open up those walls and start to do some rehabilitation. Just as we saw with the pool, the budget overruns and the timeline extensions really made that project untenable. And this building is even in worse shape and older. So for those reasons, I think that our teens deserve a new facility. We're looking into the future. Our teens twenty-five years from now deserve a facility that is up to standards and I will be voting in support of the main motion.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this amendment? I will just note, I appreciate and would echo Council Vice President Forsyth's points, I will note, I have spent dozens upon dozens of hours listening and engaging on this since, since the beginning of this very heartbreaking saga and have wanted us to be able to get to reopening the doors of this teen center as soon as we can, but also to make really the right decision for our community. And one of the things that I have heard, especially in listening to the stakeholder decisions and also just throughout the community, is this question of longevity of this building because we don't want to be back here in a short amount of time having to make this heartbreaking decision again. And, and when we look at the amount of investment and how long of a building we actually get, what the sustainability of that building can be as well, rebuild, rebuild gives us that, that opportunity. While also, one of the things that I would say that was discussed in a couple of different places throughout this process, which I heard community members react to, was that even if we renovate this space, given the needs of the space, it may not look anything like it does today. And so, so I think part of what is the onus on us as we make this decision, if we want to maintain what is so special about this space, is to bring that commitment forward. And I think the main motion that, that we have tonight speaks to that, and I'm happy to speak to that later. But I, I did want to speak to this. One reflection from listening to a variety of conversation on this is, I heard one of the, the teens that was involved in the stakeholder process on our wrap-up say that they came in thinking renovate and actually pivoted to rebuild because they thought about not just the present teens, but the future teens and how many future teens could enjoy this space. And that hopefully we could build a building that would last for a very, very long time. So for that reason, I'm not in support of the renovate option because I'd like us to build something that's, that lasts longer. If there are no other comments, we'll, we'll bring this amendment to a vote, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
Councilmember Noevo Kamina?
No.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
And I vote no. The amendment has failed. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. As discussed, I would like to move that we add the words renovate or rebuild based on the mayor, or based on the executive office evaluation. Add those words to our motion.
It has been moved. Is there a second? It has been moved by Councilmember Fields and seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Fields, would you like to say anything else about your amendment?
Yes, thank you. So I think that both Councilmember Forsyth and Councilmember, Council President Kritzler, both said what I think is important to be said, which is, we don't know. And we've not taken the time to know. We don't know what we're going to find. We may find a building that can actually be renovated in a very expeditious and less expensive way that will last thirty-five, forty years. And I would argue that that forty years on a building like that would be sufficient, especially if it's properly maintained, which in the past it wasn't. I would also say that a swimming pool is inherently problematic and is completely different than a building. So when you look at a swimming pool, and I have been in a number of organizations, matter of fact, I was familiar with the Redmond Pool when I was at King County, and we knew everything there was to know about the problems with the pool. So that is, that is a bad comparison. And to, to Councilmember Kritzler's point about, you know, what we heard and, and the idea that we want to get more for, for our investment, that's exactly right. But we still did not take the time to do the evaluation and get the right people in here. Council and the stakeholder group are not the right people to make those technical decisions. And I said it last week and I would just repeat it. The stakeholder group itself saved, salvaged what was a fairly contrived process by, by visioning and talking to one another, and a spirit was created. And they gave us a very clear direction of what they would like it to be. And then they added rebuild because of those metrics, eleven million, nine million, twenty-five years, fifty years. And who wouldn't? And if I knew that that was a certainty, I would vote for rebuild easily. I will make the argument one last time. We don't know because we didn't take the time to know. So I think that we should give the choice to renovate or rebuild where it belongs in the executive office. And if they want to do a one-day evaluation, I'm not going to argue that. If they want to do the right due diligence and take the time and hire an independent architect to come in and say, here's your best options, that's what needs to be done. That's what not was done. So that's it.
Actually, I'm just going to call up our Parks Director just to speak to the evaluation that was done. Because I think it is, it is relevant and it's good for the public to remember since we had a study session in July in which we heard about this. We heard about the, the work that had been done to evaluate the options that informs our decision tonight. Director Hamilton, would you be able to speak to that?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. So in April, I came and spoke with city council about the decisions that were made about moving operations out of the teen center and the proposed steps forward, which included bringing on Pertite and McKenzie, which is an engineering firm that we contracted with to come in and do a deeper dive to understand what was necessary to bring the Old Firehouse Teen Center up to a safe and habitable space for operations and use. Our previous facility's condition assessment had shown really significant deficiencies and our facilities team, despite their best efforts, continued to struggle to keep that facility in a place that we felt was safe to operate for our programmatic needs. And so, due to the facility's condition assessment and the hazardous materials that we were aware were in the facility, the decision was made to move operations to the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village and then to do the study into what would a renovation look like, what would a similar rebuild look like? That renovation looked at the previous facility's condition assessment and then also had a variety of engineers moving throughout that facility, understanding the structure, understanding what was in there, and doing additional hazardous material study. When Pertite and McKenzie was here in July, the question was asked to them if there was a smaller renovation that could be done to open it sooner. Their response was, yes, that decision could be made. But nothing in their report was a non-negotiable. All of the things that were in the report are things that need to be done to create a safe and habitable space. To do smaller renovations on a shorter timeline would actually create more operational impacts because what would happen is we would need to mobilize additional times, shutting down programmatic spaces, and it would also cost additional resources because mobilizing contractors over and over again increases your cost as opposed to mobilizing them once. As for the conversation around, we don't know, the things that we do know are in that report. The things that we don't know are the things like the extent of the wood rot. The engineering, Pertite and McKenzie shared that there is signs of wood rot throughout the facility, but those are not, we can't possibly know how much wood rot until we really actually open the walls. And so while there are things that we don't know, the And so while there are things that we don't know, the information that we do know was presented in July to city council and presented to the stakeholders, we did take the time to study. We did take the time to bring in a subjective expert through Pertite and McKenzie to understand the conditions of that facility. Further study would show similar things.
Thank you so much, Director Hamilton. Appreciate that. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. And I did want to, nope, you're good. Thanks. I actually just wanted to recognize that Steph has put some significant time into this matter, and that wasn't the reason for proposing a renovation option. But a couple of arguments for, in addition to this, and I appreciate Councilmember Fields for proposing the alternative options and the choice. I appreciate the option for the mayor to build, I mean, have the executive power to conclude the argument for us. But renovation is more environmentally sustainable, and we didn't really have that conversation just using that existing structure. It should be still part of that larger conversation for deciding what we do with that particular use of the facility, even if it's partial restoration or saving parts of that building because it's a less costly option. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate, you know, Director Hamilton coming in and reminding us about the meetings. I happened to be at those meetings, and I asked some very specific questions about design to cost, and they were not clear on what that amount could be. There was discussion about toxic materials, but they weren't certain of what that would mean as far as the paint. So there was uncertainty, and I would argue again that they had, based on my questioning and my understanding of the responses, they were never really tasked with coming up with an optimal renovation plan. They did what I would call a very cursory and preliminary view of what kinds of things we would likely have to look at. So I think that a renovation could be 50% to 60% less, potentially. And I don't have any facts to support that, other than my own experience with rebuilding tennis clubhouses and tennis facilities and other work that I've done. But based on my questions and the response that I recall from the consultants that we hired, there was not certainty with them either. So to take the extra due diligence and have the right people make this decision, i.e. the mayor's office and all of the resources at her disposal, seems the most prudent and best course of action.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I'm not going to be in support of this motion, this amendment, as I believe that it would just further set us behind. I think that the process of this, the teens have waited long enough. There was a decision that, or there was a recommendation made to the council. It reached us. There was, of course, the minority recommendation as well. But I feel that if we incorporate more study and more study and more study, at what point are we finally going to make a decision? And I'm ready to make that decision, to move forward with the recommendation as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I will just note that I will not be in support of this amendment. And I will correct for the record that the discussion amongst the subcommittee was included Councilmember Fields asking myself and Councilmember Nueva Camina if we thought we had enough information to make this decision. And I do think we have enough information. We heard from our parks director tonight about the assessments that we did. We've done months and months of community engagement, and it is our council's decision to make. And I think our council should make this decision tonight and not delay or put it to the mayor to make that decision. And I'd like to maintain that ability to make this decision, myself as a council member and ourselves, because it is his important duty. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move to a vote on this amendment, starting with Councilmember Fields. This is a roll-call vote. Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
No.
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 Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
And I vote no. The amendment fails, which brings us back to the original motion. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Council last reviewed this item at our study session last week, and many of our concluding remarks were made there. I see that there has been some editing to the motion that is put before us, which is in accordance with the direction that the council gave at the study session last week. This has been a long and arduous process, but in the course of government, actually a fairly speedy one, and I do believe that the advocates deserve a lot of credit for that. I will be voting yes on the main motion in front of us here today and look forward to a teen-centered process to both honor the Old Firehouse Teen Center and bring online a new legacy for youth in Redmond.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. As we advance into these next steps for the Old Firehouse Teen Center, I want to emphasize how important it is that teens remain at the center of the design and the decision-making process. This space has supported generations of youth, and the rebuild is an opportunity to honor its legacy while investing in a space that is relevant, welcoming, and designed with them and not just for them. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing no other hands raised, I will make one comment myself. I know this has been a difficult process for many because this is such a beloved space for our community and has been heartbreaking to have, to see its doors closed. And my goal with our decision tonight is that we can move swiftly towards reopening those doors and being able to truly be able to ensure that we have this space for our teens. This is a jewel, not just for our community, but as we discussed at our study session last week, it is a jewel for our entire region. It has an incredible history. And so what you see in the motion that we have on the consent agenda tonight is what we heard from listening deeply to our community and engaging. We heard that they want to keep this special same location. We heard that they want to preserve the music space and a safe space for teens, by teens. They want to see it built quickly, and they want to see it last long. And all those things are contained within this motion. And especially making sure that we get the process right is why you'll see in this motion that it's not only specific about what we want to do, but how we want to do it. And I just want to say that tonight is really the first step in doing that, but to commit to everyone who cares so deeply about this building, that I intend to be here every step of the way, listening to community, working with our wonderful staff, with our wonderful community and stakeholders, and with our teens in particular, to make sure that this can be the space that we really all love and design this building for the future. Any other comments? Councilmember Fields.
Yes, thank you. So I will be voting for the main motion. I want to express my appreciation to you, Council President, for not only what you just said, but that's a summary of what you have been saying over the past few weeks. And I think it's essential moving forward. I still believe that we should have put renovation on the table and done the extra work, but since we didn't, your words about moving forward expeditiously, making sure that the teens have a voice, and not only have a voice, but have a voice in their way and not be persuaded to talk in a way that suits staff or suits the agenda. We need to, and we talked about this in our subcommittee group, we need to learn how to engage people in a more meaningful way. I hope that that's done as you move forward. I want to express my appreciation again to you, Council President, and I'm putting my confidence in you that you will in fact see that through.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, we will move to a vote. This is a roll-call vote, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 Aye. It passes six to zero. And with that, we have the passage of our consent agenda. I got so excited about this item that I did not read the other items into the record from the consent agenda, so I will read the items that are ordinances and resolution titles into the record. Consent item number 15, AM number 25178, resolution number 1613, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, rejecting all bids received by the city on the wastewater lift station equipment upgrades, phase two, project number 2408. Consent item number 16, AM number 25179, resolution number 1614, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, establishing the amount of sewer additional connection charges for the Redmond Town Center Sewer System Improvement Area, Leary Way Basin. Consent item number 17, AM number 25180, ordinance number 3233, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Redmond Municipal Code subsections 5.04.070.A, 5.04.080.A, and 5.04.080.F, updating the business license fee as required by the RCW 35.90, municipal business licensing, providing for the severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 3234, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, levying property taxes for the City of Redmond for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2026, on all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on general operations, recognized voter-approved levy lift lifts for the public safety and parks for the ensuing year as required by law, providing for the severability and establishing an effective date. Resolution number 1615, a resolution of the City Council of Redmond, Washington, establishing new connection charge rates. Ordinance number 3235, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the subsections 13.20.040, 13.20.045.B, and 13.20.047.B of the Redmond Municipal Code to establish stormwater drainage capital facilities charges. Ordinance number 3236, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending ordinance numbers 3196, 3215, 3224, and 3229, by making adjustments to the city's 2025 to 2026 biennial budget in Exhibit 1, and establishing a business technology investment program fund. Now that I've read all those into the record, I will thank our very patient new human services commissioner, because with the passage of the consent agenda, we have a new human services commissioner, Vrithika Gupta, to swear in. Congratulations, and thank you for waiting. And we will now have her sworn in by our clerk, Cheryl Zanthos.
Okay, I will be swearing you in. So I'll read the oath to you, and then if you agree, you say I will or I do at the end, and then you sign it, and then you can go over and shake hands with our council members. So raise your right hand. Do you, Vrithika Gupta, having been duly appointed to the Human Services Commission of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just sign right here, and I do the rest of it. And just sign it. Thank you. And go shake their hand. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
And let the record show that Councilmember Fields has left the meeting. The next item on our agenda is hearings and reports. The next is a staff report, which is the quarterly overtime report, January 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2025. And we have Ami Virrell, our deputy fire chief, who will introduce this item.
Hi, thank you very much, council and mayor, tonight. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to provide with you our third quarter overtime update. As you may know, and the public may not be aware, we usually do this at our committee of the whole, but we'll have the opportunity to speak tonight with you. As a result, there isn't a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll just present to you everything that you have in your agenda memo. Overall, our salary expenditures are tracking favorably at this time of year. When we took a look at our regular and our overtime costs together, we are at 35% of the budget year-to-date. That is below where we should be or could be at, which is at about 37.5% at this point this year. Where we are still seeing, though, is cost pressures in overtime. We are at 53.7% over the overtime budget, totaling about 4.6 million. I'm sorry, that's about 16% over the target for this time this year. However, these costs are fully offset at this point in the quarter by regular salary savings of about $3 million, which is due to vacancies that we have in the fire department. Since tonight, we do have an opportunity with the public that normally doesn't see a lot of these meetings, I just wanted to remind council and the public as well that there are two types of overtime that the fire department experiences and why it's treated a little bit differently than where we think of overtime in our normal jobs. Shift overtime is when we have to provide staffing every day to be able to meet just the daily staffing that happens. It takes 26 firefighters daily on duty across different ranks and apparatus, and so if somebody is out for a vacation, a family leave, a medical leave, or they've retired, another firefighter in a different rank or an associated rank needs to be able to step in and take over and cover that position. We can't send engines and aid cars out shorthanded, and so that staffing is required to ensure that we still have a safe and effective response on a daily basis. So shift coverage overtime is an essential to maintaining our baseline level of service to the community, as opposed to a person in an office job who sprains an ankle and can work from home for a couple of days or can call out sick and the work can be put aside for a few days. Now, the other form of overtime that we do see is also something called incident-driven overtime, and this occurs when we have something that goes beyond our daily operations. For example, major events, emergencies, disasters, the deployment earlier this year to California with several of a crew to go down there and help out California, wildfire deployments, or any other specialized operation like up-staffing at an event like a Derby Days or anything else where we know we need extra crews. And so in many of those cases, however, a lot of that overtime is actually reimbursed either through federal, state, or county partners, especially when we're supporting a regional mission. So basically, in plain language, the daily overtime or the shift-driven coverage overtime is the everyday overtime that we have to accrue, whereas the incident is on a special occasion. So when we look at our largest overtime drivers, it is in that shift coverage, and it is what is required for our suppression operations. And so the fire suppression overtime presently is at 70% above the target, again, of about $1.4 million. But again, we're experiencing a large number of vacancies in our department, and so that savings in the salary is about 1.9, and so that ends up offsetting the cost for us. So again, from a budget standpoint, we're below budget, but we're still experiencing the overtime cost due to vacancies. The contributors to that can be many things, which we've talked about before, that recruits are paid while they're in an academy, but we have overtime coverage for the hole that they're going to eventually fill in about, you know, six months. We've had an increase in family and medical leave and modified duty assignments. That usually comes again from injuries, where a firefighter is still going to be on the payroll, servicing maybe in an admin function, but another firefighter needs to take effect. And then again, we have been, as we've been experiencing over the last few years, a lot of unfilled vacancies due to a lot of retirements, which we expect to continue to see for the next few years. When we look at ALS, our Advanced Life Saving Program, that is $1.6 million in overtime, but again, that is actually fully reimbursed by King County, so that ends up becoming something that doesn't end up being a budget burden to us as much. And finally, on the incident side, the incident-driven side, our prevention team, which sometimes can be involved in that, they're actually under budget by about $15K, and our wildfire deployments total about $162,000 in cost, but the California deployment has already been reimbursed. We're just now waiting for the Northwest deployments to Washington and Oregon firefighters this last summer to be coming in at some point. So again, bottom line, while overtime is above target on the budget line item, overtime is serving its intended purpose, which is to maintain our staffing on a daily basis to ensure our continuity of services to our community, but we still remain within our overall personal budget, salary budgets due to those vacancy savings. And so that concludes the third quarter OT report for Fire, and I'm available if there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief. In the past, we've, past couple of quarters, we've been discussing the over-hire strategy that could potentially make gains. Is it proving promising, or still too soon to tell, or we're just really waiting on that next class in six months?
I think it's too soon to tell at this point. Like, again, that's an opportunity that we're looking at that we think could have some huge benefits to being able to do that, but at this point in time, we won't be able to report back on that. Thank you for the question, though.
Seeing no other questions, thank you so much for the report, and we'll move on to the next report.
Thank you.
The second staff report is the third quarter 2025 financial report. Kelly Cochran, our Finance Director, will introduce this item. Go ahead, Director Cochran.
Thank you, just a moment here, so I can fail at technology, I'm sure. Look at that. Okay. Good evening, Council, good to see you again. We're here for the third quarter report. Just a reminder, at this point in the... Hold on. Why? Why me? Every time. Thank you. At this point in the biennium, we would be at about 37.5% spent for the third quarter. As we have been making our way through this very interesting year, we have yet to experience any real significant budget impacts caused by the state of the economy. We have yet to realize any real impacts from the tariffs as those policies are being settled and implemented. The inflation rate is, at last report out, is 2% over what is typical for us at 3%, which led to the Federal Reserve to decrease the interest rate by 25 basis points. The sales, our retail sales growth in the City of Redmond is extremely strong this year. We have, in September and October, experienced our first two consecutive months of over $5 million in ongoing sales tax. And as you can see, the King County forecast is expecting to see a little over a 9% jump next year, primarily because of the impacts of sales tax 5814, which expands sales tax to industries where it had not typically been applied, such as information technology. Our assessed value from our preliminary property tax information increased by 6.3% from last year, so $2.5 billion. And our growth in employment, although we've experienced layoffs here within the city, we are still above what we expect in terms of the number of businesses licensed and the number of FTEs licensed. So we are still expecting not only to be at what we budgeted, but likely over for both years in the biennium for business licensing. When looking at just our overall revenue pack, we are really where we would expect to be. There are a couple of areas that, although they may look concerning, I believe that we will flatten out by the end of the year. Property taxes, our second distribution of property taxes came in in October, and that brought us up to what our target is for this, for 2025. The state entitlements is really just a timing issue, as is the utility taxes. There is a one-month lag there. Charges for services are showing under at this point because we were late getting the transport fees implemented, but we do expect that we will collect the same amount that was forecasted. That will happen, though, in early 2026 and then flatten out for the rest of the biennium. And other revenues is also caused by a lag in our investment interest, so really no concerns with general fund revenues. Our ongoing new revenues that we've been tracking, as I said, are EMS transport fees. We now have those in place. We are starting to collect a whopping $16,000, but we are seeing more come in month over month. The 1% for the utility taxes is right on. I'm a great forecaster, apparently, $1,000 off, but we will likely end up higher than we expected because some of our water sale revenues were higher than anticipated. We are pretty conservative when it comes to estimating revenues from irrigation because that can kind of go either way, and we had a very healthy summer. On the expenditure side, really no surprises there either. Again, we should be at 37.5%. The areas that are over are the same areas that have been trending over, and it's because of the spending of service enhancements dollars early in the biennium, especially for capital outlay for vehicles and things like that. Also, from the public works side, there was a need to order supplies to deal with a snowstorm earlier this year, and that is on its flattening out. Departmentally, police and public works are really right on, but those are the two departments that had the spend early in the biennium of both capital outlay and supplies. So no concerns from a departmental perspective. As you've heard just a moment ago, overtime for the Fire Department is being utilized, but again, being controlled within savings from their salaries and benefits. We are seeing the same from police and from other departments as well. The capital investment program revenues started out a little bit slow this year when it comes to our connection charges and REIT. And I don't know if it was hesitation due to uncertainties in the economy, but we saw them pick up early in the second quarter, and for October, REIT really rebounded. So I expect really no problems with our capital program the way that it was budgeted and the way that we are forecasting then for the next biennium. The spending for both the capital and our business technology investment programs are lower than we would expect at this point in the biennium, but there is a lot of invoices from summer projects that are just making their way through the pipeline. That is when we are at our peak construction season, and it takes a bit to get those invoices in the door and processed. And so you will see, when we look at the fourth quarter report, that spending is up above what we are expecting based on this number. The business technology program, there are several projects that are queued up for implementation early next year, and I expect that their spend rate will flatten out over the biennium. The utilities, as I mentioned, we did have a fairly healthy summer, and so water rates, wastewater rates were well-received. The thing that we are missing is, in this view, is one more month of summer revenues, which is October. So in October, we bill for revenue or for consumption from August through September, which is high consumption months. And so you will see, when we talk about the fourth quarter, that water sales are over what we expect for the year. From a baseline budget perspective, there is really no concerns. The Safe and Reliable Drinking Water Budget Plan is right at budget. That has been slowly making its way down. We have some big expenditures in, early in the year for Cascade Water Alliance, and those are normalizing. When looking at Safe and Resilient, there are two budget plans that are trending over. This, again, is due to some of the capital investments or capital outlays that were made earlier in the biennium. No concerns when looking at Strategic and Responsive. And on Vibrant and Connected, there is a slight overage on housing and human services. A lot of that is due to a timing issue between a budget adjustment and an expenditure that went out, so when you see the fourth quarter report, you'll see a change in the budget there. The next report that we'll be looking at is the fourth quarter report. We will have that to you once we have done a soft close of 2025 and feel fairly certain that there won't be any significant changes caused by the audit for the 2024 financial statements. We'll be checking in most likely in March, April timeframe. If it is not yet ready for a staff report, we will have a discussion at FAC, just letting you know where we are, but I don't anticipate any problems. Any questions?
Questions from the Council. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you so much. I don't have any particular questions this month, in part because we had a really robust study session last week, too, that we were all preparing for, but want to thank you so much for bringing forward the quarterly report. What a privileged position to be in, to have a budget that is performing this well, given the uncertainty that surrounds us. So I think that's an important message for the public as well. We made the best guess we can. It's performing pretty well, and yes, we also acknowledge that there's a lot of uncertainty, and I appreciate all that you and your team are doing to manage that as best you can.
Thank you.
Looking at the online, all right. I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you so much, Director Cochran. We'll move on to the next staff report. Next on the agenda are staff reports for the proposed personnel manual benefit changes and proposed updates to the 2026 pay plans. Catherine Laird, Human Resource Director, will provide a presentation on both of these items. Go ahead. Give you a minute to get set up.
I'll do this one. Okay, I haven't... Oh, it's on. Okay. I haven't done this very often. So, hi, Council, I'm Catherine Laird, I'm your HR Director, and... Oops. There we go. Okay. And so tonight, in my staff report, I will be reporting on both the personnel manual changes and the 2026 pay plan updates, even though they are separated out in the council agenda. I will provide you an overview of both items, and in your council packet, that provides you the detailed information of each, including all of the red line changes. I will start with the personnel manual, and when I'm finished, I will pause, and I would be pleased to answer any questions that you have. I will then speak to the pay plan updates, and again, I would be pleased to answer your questions after that. I am seeking your approval to put both items on the December 2nd council consent. The personnel manual provides policy direction to nonrepresented and employees and union employees whose collective bargaining agreements, also called CBAs, are silent on a particular topic. This personnel manual update project started in late summer, following the completion of six union negotiations. There are several reasons why it is important to update the personnel manual at this time. First, within those negotiations, there were several items management wanted to see incorporated into the CBAs and other items the unions wanted to incorporate. After agreement was reached to update the CBAs, some of the negotiated items currently do not exist for the nonrepresented employees, and it makes sense to incorporate them into the personnel manual. Additionally, human resources staff are obligated to administer the policies in the personnel manual and the contractual language in the CBAs. With eight CBAs, so it's eight CBAs, and the personnel manual, it can get complicated balancing different language requirements. Therefore, whenever possible, I try to find ways to establish consistent contractual language across all employee groups. My staff will also identify language that needs to be clarified so they can administer more effectively, and sometimes there are mandated legal changes that must be incorporated into the policy. So for these reasons, this is why we are bringing these personnel manual updates before you for your approval, again, with an effective date of January 1st, 2026. There are a total of 25 policy changes being made to the personnel manual. Eleven of those changes require council approval because they are considered benefit changes, and all of these changes, I am seeking your approval, and they do have a positive impact for staff. These changes and the corresponding reasons are included in your council packet materials. Of the remaining 14 policies being updated, council approval is not required. The changes either expand upon the existing policy, is language clarification, or clarifies a current practice. Additionally, we reworked Chapter 13 by expanding the focus to include separation language that's located in other sections of the personnel manual and added that in, plus revised retirement language. Again, all of these changes and the corresponding reasons are included in your council packet. Okay. So with that, I'd like...
My staff will also identify language that needs to be clarified so they can administer more effectively. And sometimes there are mandated legal changes that must be incorporated into the policy. So for these reasons, this is why we are bringing these Personnel Manual Updates before you for your approval, again with an effective date of January 1st, 2026. There are a total of 25 policy changes being made to the Personnel Manual. Eleven of those changes require council approval because they are considered benefit changes, and all of these changes, I am seeking your approval, and they do have a positive impact for staff. These changes and the corresponding reasons are included in your council packet materials. Of the remaining 14 policies being updated, council approval is not required. The changes either expand upon the existing policy, is language clarification, or clarifies a current practice. Additionally, we reworked Chapter 13 by expanding the focus to include separation language that's located in other sections of the Personnel Manual and added that in, plus revised retirement language. Again, all of these changes and the corresponding reasons are included in your council packet. Let's see here. Okay. So with that, I'd like to stop and see if you have any questions.
Are there questions from the council? All right, why don't you continue?
Great. Okay. So now I'd like to discuss the Pay Plan Updates. Every year, I come to council to ask for your approval to authorize COLA for the nonrepresented employees. I also ask for your approval to update the pay plans by the approved COLA, plus any other classification changes. I will also ask for your approval to update union pay plans by negotiated COLAs within their CBAs that you had previously agreed or approved. This year, we have four nonrepresented pay plans for your approval and two union pay plans. I will discuss those in more detail in a couple of minutes. But first, I would like to explain further about the Pay Plan Update Project. For the nonrepresented classifications, specifically the Executive or E-Pay Plan and the Nonrepresented or N-Pay Plan, we conducted a market analysis on all those classifications. The E-Pay Plan includes the Chief Operating Officer, Directors, Chiefs, and the Deputy Directors, and we retained an outside consulting firm who conducted a market analysis. Based on the outcome of the market analysis, the classifications were then updated in the E-Pay Plan. The N-Pay Plan includes managers, supervisors, and confidential employees. The market analysis was conducted internally by senior HR staff, and based on the outcome of the data obtained, the classifications were also updated in the N-Pay Plan. The same data was used for the Supplemental NS Pay Plan as well. Finally, the General Supplemental, or GS, Pay Plan was updated to match the nonrep COLAs, but no market analysis was necessary and no other changes were made to the classifications. So I'm going to quickly review each of these four nonrepresented Pay Plan Changes. We have the elected officials, and the COLA for council, and the COLA for the mayor is based on CPIW 2025 first half. So CPIW is the Consumer Price Index for workers, and it's the 2025 first half, which is 2.3% for both groups. Both of these COLAs are required through the ordinance, as indicated on the slide. The Executive Pay Plan and the Nonrepresented Pay Plans, we are requesting a COLA at 3.8%. The COLA is for nonrepresented employees who have traditionally followed the RESHA COLA, which council approved this year to be 3.8% for 2026. By following the same COLA, it retains appropriate pay differential between management and Also, based on market, several classifications moved into higher pay bands, and in some cases, new pay bands were created. In your council packet materials, you received redlined versions of the pay plans and the movement that had occurred. And additionally, several new classifications were created. These new classifications are being established to meet specific bodies of work, and they include the Assistant Chief Operating Officer in the E-Pay Plan, and in the N and NS Pay Plans, the Principal Financial Analyst, HR Generalist, and Paralegal. And I am seeking your approval to update these pay plans, as indicated in your council packet, with a 3.8% COLA. And then finally, General Supplemental Pay Plan will follow the N-Pay Plan, and we are asking also for a 3.8% COLA. There are no other changes to the classification of this pay plan, and seeking your approval for that 3.8% COLA. For the two, not, for the two Union Pay Plans, both are in their second year of their CBA, and in accordance with both AFSMI and Police Uniform CBAs, their 2026 COLA is to be based upon CPIW first half, which again is 2.3%. There are no other changes to either pay plan. I am seeking your approval to update both pay plans based on that 2.3% COLA. And with that, I would be pleased to answer questions on the pay plan.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Director Laird. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the positions that are listed as new in the pay plans. There's only a couple of them, but it'd be helpful to hear more and make sure that we're all aware of where those FTEs are coming from in the middle of the biennium.
Sure. So we have, one is an Assistant Chief Operating Officer. Now, let me just start by saying, all of these classifications are just classifications that are going into the personnel, to the pay plans. They do not come with FTEs, so they're not, so if you approve these classifications, you're not approving new FTEs. So in order to fill the positions, they have to be filled with the existing FTEs, and we would reclassify into those FTEs. The Assistant Chief Operating Officer, it is a new classification that's being added to the Executive Department, and it's being added based upon the fact that all of the departments have deputy directors and, in their departments, and there's really no true deputy director to the Chief Operating Officer. And so what this would do is it would create a role under the Chief Operating Officer to still operate at a department level, if you will, by overseeing the Executive Department, but being the deputy to the COO. The department itself has expanded quite significantly over the last five years. It's increased in staff by 14 and also taken on new initiatives, including the Grant Program Ready, it has environmental sustainability, and the City Attorney, plus overseeing City Clerk's Office and Communications. So because of that expansion, it is, there is a need to have more leadership within that department. And so that is why that classification is needed within the department, and that is what we're looking at. So it would be the deputy to the COO, but it would oversee the Executive Department. The other position is a Principal Financial Analyst, which is a specialty position that will oversee specific functions within the Finance Department. So in a particular case, they might oversee Treasury or some other special functions that help with, with the, that would help Kelly with all of her forecasting and such for the budget. And that's an individual contributor role. We also have in Human Resources, we're looking for a Human Resources Generalist, and that would be equal to an HR Analyst, but a Generalist has a broad perspective over HR and a broad focus of functions versus an HR Analyst is a specialist in a particular area within Human Resources. So it better defines some of the bodies of work that HR staff would do. And then finally, there is a paralegal that will be for the City Attorney, and it is a confidential paralegal position. So we already have a paralegal that's within RESHA, which is a union position, but this one is confidential based upon the nature of work in the City Attorney's Office.
Councilmember Nuva Kamina.
Thank you. That answered a lot of the questions that I had as well, but it's, this is the first time that we're seeing this. We're asking, we're being asked to put this on consent early December, and I feel like we needed, we need a little bit more time to discuss, to study, to dig in deeper, because it's, you know, build it and they will come, right? And what I mean by that is, once we start adding these to the pay bands, then it's a matter of then budgeting for it and then filling the position. Taking a look at what is that going to be doing, because I know that in recent years, discussion around pay has been particularly tender. So, you know, when we're talking about adding things, or, you know, what, how much of the budget is going towards that? So making sure that, we've just got a little bit more, more information on it. The COLA, absolutely, as I'm listening to the presentation, completely on board with the COLA, just wanting a little bit more, like, taking a look at what would this mean for our budget? Because I can take a look at the numbers for right now and what's projected for 2026, but what is that delta? And I haven't yet seen what the delta is from, from 2025 and then moving forward.
Right. So those are actually really good questions, and I think the best way to look at it is when, regardless of what classifications are within the pay plan, if a department wants to move a position that's in a lower classification to a higher classification, they do have to ensure that the funds are within their budget. So that would not, any of the changes for any of these classifications would not impact budget from the budget that's been approved for departments. The departments then have to determine how they would allocate their funds to be able to cover that if they want to have higher classifications. So all of these, because there's no new FTEs associated with them, all of them would be covered within the department's budget.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I would tend to agree with Councilmember Nuva Kamina and suggest that we defer this to the December 9th study session for a further review and conversation.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Director Laird, can you speak to whether we could add some more time on this and kind of the time-bound needs for this decision? Should we, for example, review this at the December 9th study session, and then we would not be able to vote on it until the January business meeting? Would you be able to make changes retroactively?
Yes, we would be able to make the changes retroactively. We could make that happen. It's really problematic if we exceed the, the, the pay needs to go into effect by the January 25th paycheck. So as long as we can make, have a decision made on the pay for that, that would be ideal. If there was a way to pull out what you might want to discuss during the study session and approve other aspects of the pay plans, that would be more ideal if we could have at least, like, the union pay plans, for example, approved and the nonrep pay plans approved.
Yeah.
Well, any of the pay plans approved would be ideal.
Yeah, I was going to suggest and ask the council whether, if there is enough interest in being able to study the proposed changed pay plans that are non-union further, whether we could put the union contracts and kind of split this item into two pieces. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to suggest, if we could move forward with the COLAs and those items, and then hold off on the others until we have more time to discuss. Thanks.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Anderson.
This seems like a good time, since this is one of my last meetings, to mention that I think I strongly support the idea of a uniform COLA throughout the city, and that makes negotiations easier for everyone and guarantees a pay increase on a regular schedule for folks. So really strongly support that idea. Thanks.
And councilmembers, I'll just ask if there is interest in being able to further study some of the changes to the play, to the pay plans that are non-union and putting the consent items on the agenda. I guess you can either do thumbs or raise your hand if you want to make a comment. Councilmember Stewart.
Well, thank you, and I will support the effort to move, move the pieces forward that we can today, but there are probably a few more things we should discuss, and I apologize if this is catching you off guard in this moment, but we did have an FAC meeting that ended 30 minutes earlier this week, or, excuse me, last week, and it was the same day that we got your materials, and I had really just wished we could have just had you with us there. But there are a couple of things, so I appreciate the effort to, to split the conversation and not delay the good work that is ready to move forward.
Great, thank you. So I think we have, we have pretty clear direction, so if you want to put on the, on the December 2nd agenda, the union-related items, but pull out any of the items that, around pay plan changes that, that are non-union represented for further discussion on the December 9th study session. I believe there's room on that study session, so we can make the space there.
Great. And then we'll, you'll put on consent also the Personnel Manual Changes, correct?
Counselor, does anyone object to putting the Personnel Manual Changes on consent? I'm not seeing any, so, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will see you back soon. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
And one more note on that. I will just note that I do hope when we have that come back, that we also hear, we didn't hear, get to hear from Mayor Bernie tonight, and I will wrap up this item at this moment, but Mayor Bernie will, will look forward to hearing your thoughts, especially on the Executive Department during that study session as well. And if you have any comments, feel free to jump in. I will give you a moment here, but otherwise, I'll move us on. All right. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Ombuds Reports. For October, we had Councilmember Nuva Kamina, and for November, we had Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Nuva Kamina.
I have nothing further to report for October.
Great. Are there any other items for Ombuds, since Councilmember Fields has left the meeting? Councilmember Stewart.
Well, thank you so much, and I already took a sneak peek at the schedule, so thank you so much to our colleague who will be taking it on in December. We appreciate you, Councilmember Nuva Kamina. Two in one season is a lot. A few things for me. I wanted to let the council know that in our recent, I'm sorry, I cannot remember if it was a study session or a committee meeting, but recently, we discovered that we had a potential gap in impact fee collection for development in Redmond that is in the Bellevue School District boundary, and I just wanted to follow up with the council, that I did follow up with COO files on this issue and have actually been in conversation with a Bellevue School Board member about this issue, and she's going to ask some questions on her side of things, but hopefully, we've identified a gap that has a path forward, but if, if not, maybe we're able to ask some of the right questions. I also wanted to follow up on, let people know that I have her, let my colleagues know, excuse me, it's getting late. I wanted to let my colleagues know that I had a call from a neighbor who was interested in an update on the Inner Lake Sporting Association. After speaking with COO files, I learned that the investigation is still pending, and a second RFP was scheduled to be published, I believe, last week or the week before. And, and things are in a somewhat similar place, but for the council's awareness, the primary complainant is being kept up to date by staff. And so if, if you get contact from a resident who knows that complainant, then they are being kept up to date. I had lots of visitors to my office hours last week, and those are on the second and fourth Thursday of the month. That will continue to be true in 2026. However, there are no office hours on November 27th or December 25th, because the library is closed on those days. Couple of the items that came up, of course, lots of conversation about the flock cameras that were also discussed earlier in committee today, as well as by members of the public here tonight. Just for awareness, in committee today, we took direction, or we gave staff direction to prepare a legal review of the contract so that we can evaluate our next steps there. I heard interest in revenue tools that can be used for building housing stability, potentially things like vacancy taxes and the like. I heard interest from community in advancing the dark skies policies that have been of interest through the Park Plan and the Comp Plan, and met with a resident who has some draft legislation that she would like us to consider. I had a question about the utility tax that was discussed last week, and a thoughtful conversation about the reciprocal relationship between the council and our various commissions, and has me thinking maybe about a potential study session suggestion for early 2026. And I spoke with a neighbor about an, her interest in a place structure at Estera Park. Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Yes. Thank you. I am just, have had some conversations with folks around flock cameras, the teen center, and our final vote on how that shaped up. I want to thank Councilmember Nuva Kamina for her Veterans Day coffee, was able to join her and some community members for that, and it was delightful, and lots of conversations around safety in Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items for Ombuds? Not seeing any. I will note, most of the items that my colleagues talked about, I also talked with a lot of community members about. I also had a really good conversation with several community members about our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan five-year update, and appreciated the input that I got there in advance of last week's study session. And... And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'm going to keep it to the top three. So earlier tonight, we had a Public Safety and Human Services Committee of the Whole. I already reported on our next steps regarding the flock cameras. We also had our first of four housing framework reports, including a brief preview of staff's interest in merging the Housing Action Plan and Human Services Strategic Plan. Great news, of course, is that the Housing Action Plan is, has so many actions that are completed or underway. So we will be back in February with our next report on that matter. The packet also included a memo on the $250,000 recently distributed to community-based organizations who are responding to residents and families most impacted by the current federal action. You can see the list of grants that were made in that packet. And finally, we validated the application materials for our council vacancy. The application period will open tomorrow, so please consider applying, and best of luck to all the candidates. On Friday, I attended the Regional Utility Rate Summit with several staff from the City of Redmond, Amy Tsai, Chris Stanger, Amanda Blazer, I'm getting your last name wrong, Amanda, I apologize, Amanda and Erin Moldiver. This summit was a successful first step in strengthening our collective understanding of the rate drivers that are mounting in the utility space. This includes aging infrastructure, deferred asset maintenance, regulatory compliance, capital investments, labor, and a long-term shift in available funding for these projects. Just by way as an example, our current maintenance of a combined sewer stormwater system that was originally built, and in a sense, by the federal government, is now not being maintained by the federal government, and so we are funding that on the, in other ways, and it is putting strain on the system overall. So the purpose in calling the summit was to address the fact that very real and significant rate increases are on the horizon, and creative thinking and new leadership is needed in this area. So if my colleagues who missed the first summit are interested, we will be back in the new year. The council executive-elect Girmay Zahale spoke at the end of the event and committed to pulling us all back together early in 2026, and a full report just of the day will be available to everyone in January. Finally, the Sound Cities Association Nominating Committee is meeting on Thursday and Friday of this week, so I will be participating in that, and we will announce the 2026 appointments to regional boards and committees shortly. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other items for committee reports? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Mayor Bernie and I attended the Federal Legislative Priorities Committee, and we were focused a lot on finalizing the final agenda for approval. There was a lot of talk about the housing instability issues and how to get that language in there in a more neutral way and making sure that we're being very direct with our point. And we also added nutrition programs to our legislative agenda. We will send that out to you all when it is finalized. Also, attended the RAC co-chair meeting for East Trail and finalizing our, getting it ready for our meetings next year. Attended the Disability Board meeting with Councilmember Nueva Camina. Great meeting there, it was very simple and smooth. The Alternative Crisis Response Subcommittee met, and we reported out on our findings last week during committee, so I don't need to go into detail there. And then finally, Mayor Bernie and Director Helen and I are currently in Arizona on a housing development consortium tour, and we've been touring projects built, one in an old office building that was retrofitted to be turned into market-rate apartments, one that was a zero-car community, which was fascinating and very, very interesting, and hope to share more with you all about that one soon. And these are just the highlights we've heard a lot, and one that was developed on school property for affordable housing. So we're learning a lot, having some great conversations, and it's been a really, really educational, insightful, and collaborative experience here with people from Bothell, Kirkland, Bellevue, some of our legislators, and having some really great conversations about how to get more affordable housing in the region.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for sharing back. And Mayor Bernie, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm really happy that Council Vice President Forsyth shared all that we're learning in Arizona, but I also wanted to share that recently I was able to represent Redmond in Rio de Janeiro for the Local Leaders Forum related to the COP 30 in regards to climate change. And I was really pleased to be able to share all that Redmond's doing, have some really great meetings, in particular with the EU, about opportunities for us to partner with them, as well as some other, you know, really great forums that we were able to participate in and share our ideas. So more to come on that when we share soon about our climate action plan, but I just want to share with everybody how fortunate I feel that Redmond is really leading the way in the nation and is still able to represent our country in spaces where perhaps the federal government is not. So just want to share that with everybody and thank the council for all of their work on our climate initiatives, and make sure that Redmond is still on the map and doing our part in saving our planet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bernie. Not seeing any others. I will note that also Mayor Bernie and I are heading to the National League of Cities Conference in Salt Lake City this week, and I'll look forward to reporting at the next committee reports about that. I did want to follow up on the comment that Councilmember Stewart made about our committee meeting today, just because we've gotten a lot of questions about the council member vacancy, to share a couple more details on the process we discussed. As noted, the application hopefully will be open tomorrow, and it will be open until January 2nd at noon, and it will be open to anyone who can verify that they have been a resident of the City of Redmond for the last year and have qualified voter status. And there'll be a series of questions and application for applying after January 2nd. Then the council will engage in a ranking process, they'll review all of the applications, rank them, and then narrow the pool down to about 10 to 15 applicants that in early January will do a, we will do interviews with, and then use that pool to narrow down to a smaller pool, and then will, the council, and all of the, both the interviews, as well as the final vote that the council will take, will all happen in public so that everyone can see the process. So there will be more information that's posted tomorrow about that process, but I did think I would give a brief summary to note that, again, that the application will be open until January 2nd at noon, and then the bulk of the process will occur during the first couple of weeks of January, and we expect to be done by mid-January and must be done by the end of January per state law. Any other items? Great. Not seeing any, then we will move on. There's no unfinished business, there is no new business. The next item on the agenda, and the last item, is an executive session to discuss labor negotiations under RCW 42.30.140 4B for 10 minutes. Action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn at Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session team's meeting.